... which we are doing, I think, twice a year annually. We did at one point do it four times a year, but I think everyone's finally cleaned out their garages, so the volume has gone down. So we've backed that off to twice annually. The other thing that we have in the current contract is municipal services. So currently, our hauler will take care of all of our street cans. They will take care of the waste generated at our borough facilities. That includes GARA, this building, the Borough Building, Public Works Building, Resource Alley Garage. And then they also provide services for special events where six events for free a year, we can request a roll-off dumpster. So things for like Mr. Mooney mentioned on New Year's Eve, we'll have a roll-off dumpster in the proximity of the event so that we can put waste in the roll-off dumpster as opposed to trying to cram it into a couple of street cans on Lincoln Square. So that's part of the services that we call the municipal services. Along with that, come, if you recall, our friends at From the Ground Up will put cardboard trash receptacles up and down the streets, especially you'll notice these for parade route kind of stuff. That comes free of charge as well. And we, the current contract has an unlimited, so there, that's not, not a specific number assigned to that, and it's, it's, it's served us pretty well. I would, I would just remind everyone, we will have next year a new borough facility added that we would need to add to this contract, and that is the Gettysburg Welcome Center. We would definitely want to have municipal services there. In your packet tonight, I provided you a copy of the current contract, and also John Whitmore and our planning department put together this very useful tool that not only identifies by latitude and longitude and physical address, but an image of our current street cans and recycle, on-street recycling. So there's about 74 of those across the municipality. So we should decide if we want to increase that or decrease that, or maybe pick a different location for our Big Belly recycling as well. So with that, I will turn it back to President Moon and can talk about various things. I would say, also remind you that we do not have commercial mandates in the current contract. There are municipalities that do. I think it's worth the conversation. I know that we have talked about that with various businesses across the borough over the last year and a half or so. None came back with a negative attitude towards the concept, but there, there's logistics that would have to be considered should we move in a direction where we want to incorporate commercial interests as, as well as residential interests.
All right. So I want to give everybody a little bit of history here. Anyone who was around and was paying attention during the transition from our previous hauler to this one will probably remember that that was not a smooth transition. I think some of the responsibility lies with the previous servicer, and some responsibility probably lies with us and our ability to communicate, but a lot of it lies also with our current hauler. We had a number of issues. We don't need to get into those right now, but there are some things we do need to talk about in terms of what we would like to see in this bid. This industry is, for me, a deeply fascinating one. I used to work very closely with the waste industry in California. I worked for a facility that had a very severe recycling, compost, renewable, sustainable goods sort of mandate. So we had a pretty robust trash separating program within our, within our commercial enterprise where we had to, where we made sure that the waste we were generating was recyclable or compostable, and then we had to sort it all into receptacles. It was a pretty vast operation considering the amount of business we were doing. And then working closely with waste management's recycling services, compost services, hazardous materials services, I learned a lot about this industry. And the reality is that it is a troubled industry. There's a term that I learned at that job called greenwashing, which is where, you know, a lot of places put up a sign that says, "We're going green. We recycle." And that is the extent of the effort they're putting into that. But additionally, even the act of recycling can be greenwashing. For example, many haulers will do things like collect glass as part of their single-stream recycling program, but there really isn't a market for glass. So it's all going into landfill anyways.
Right.
There's a problem with single-stream recycling as well, which is that it really requires the consumer, the person producing the waste, to make sure that that waste is immaculate, like clean and dry, not a drop of food stuck to it anywhere. So they'll fill this recycling truck, and then it pulls into a facility at the, at the transfer station, and somebody looks over the top, and they look down inside, and they go, "By my eye, at least 5% of that is polluted." That ruins the entire truck, and it all goes in landfill. Now, I'm not saying every transfer station operates that way, but the ones I toured did. So that's why a lot of municipalities have moved towards sorting your recycling, right? One bin for plastic, one bin for paper, one for cardboard, one for metal. We also have an issue with consumers who believe that we are actively recycling, especially plastic. You know, if you put your plastic grocery bags in the bin out at the grocery store, they're being recycled. Well, they're, they're being recycled into energy. They're being incinerated. They're not being turned into new plastic because they can't be. Film plastics cannot be recycled. We've had multiple haulers sit down with us here at this table when Judy was in charge of this program, and she would bring a garbage bag with her, and she would put out 40 different types of items that she had found in her neighbor's recycling bins, and the haulers would sit here and go, "Well, unfortunately, that's not recyclable." We'd go down the entire table, and there's really only four things that they have a secondary market to sell as a commodity, and that is, number one, plastic. There are seven different categories of plastic. Only one is recyclable. Paper, corrugated cardboard, and metal. Everything else we're putting in that single-stream bin is considered a pollutant to the single-stream recycling. So, single-stream is certainly simplest for the consumer because they have to do the least amount of work, right? You've got a big bin. You throw everything in the There, there is a significant body of research that shows the more steps that are involved in the consumer's responsibility for separating the waste, the less participation you get. So there's a balance to be struck, right? We are, we are more likely to divert a single-stream recycling program than we are if we had, you know, four or five separate bins for people to separate their waste into. We, as a borough, and this was the reason Mrs. Butterfield even tackled this program, is because we do have state mandates to divert as much waste as we can from landfill. And we are paid by the state for the tonnage of waste that we divert. It is in the borough's interest that consumers separate out as much divertable trash as they can. The little flyer I sent you is what was sent out by our current hauler. They sent that out to every house that has a contract at the beginning of the, of our current contract with them. You might note on there that they say they will collect yard waste. Well, about halfway through the program, they just decided that they wouldn't do that. It was in our bid. They had to collect yard waste, so they said they would, and then halfway through, they just said, "We, we can't do that." I feel like that's an important thing for us, right? You know, people don't really have a way of disposing of grass clippings and leaf debris and things like that unless they happen to own a trailer and can take it down to the DPW shed themselves, or they want to pay a landscaping service to haul it away for them. So that's one item we could leave in the bid. We could take out. So we can consider whether we want to keep single-stream recycling in. We consider whether we want to keep yard waste in. E-recycling and hazardous waste. Now, this is a, this is another area where we have done events annually to assist taxpayers in getting rid of e-waste. We are considering starting a hazardous waste program. It is expensive to us to do that. The problem is, the consumer is required by law to safely recycle or dispose of e-waste and hazardous waste, yet there are no facilities to do that in Adams County. So what do you do? Well, you take your empty paint cans or your half-full paint cans, and you throw it in a black trash bag where no one, no one will see, and you bury that at the bottom of the can. What do you do with your e-waste? You, you hold on to it and hope that we've got one of these events coming up. I mean, it's not uncommon to have a pile of broken appliances in your basement just waiting, you know, six months before this event to come around. So those things are, those things are a cost to the borough that we are helping to facilitate. Mr. Berger, Mrs. Butterfield, Robbie, lots of people on the borough staff, Ms. English dedicate their Saturdays twice a year to volunteering, to collect people's e-waste, pull it, haul it out of their cars, throw it in a dumpster. Our staff is there. We're paying them. There, there are costs to us to do these things, but, you know, the argument could be made, it's worthwhile because otherwise, the taxpayers of Gettysburg have no recourse for disposing of these hazardous And then I do want to speak to the concept of a commercial mandate. I believe two contracts ago, the topic had been broached, and several members of the business community had not protested. I think that's too strong, but they had certainly offered that. They already had existing contracts with other haulers. There are currently, I think, nine haulers that work in the borough.
I think there are actually maybe 12 or 13.
Yeah, it's, it's considerable. You know, most residential service is done by waste management, but there are still people who are contracting with other services, even though our contract says you, our ordinance says you have to work with the hauler we specified. It benefits the borough to have more customers involved because that lowers the cost of, for everybody. If we were able to get commercial interests on the same contract as us, if, if, if we were able to find one hauler who could service, you know, 80, 90% of the borough instead of right now probably 45 to 55% of the borough, it would drop the cost precipitously for, for every consumer. Restaurants currently do not have to use our hauler, so they also are not subject to our recycling mandate. So there is a probably very shocking amount of waste being generated by bars and restaurants, I think just glass bottles, right, that we could be diverting from landfills, and that would, that tonnage would benefit the borough coffers. Now, we don't get a lot of money from this recycling initiative. It's about, I don't know, 10 grand a year or something like that, but it's still money being left on the table. So some of these businesses said, "Well, listen, I, you know, I've been working with, you know, Bill Stevens Waste Hauler for 20 years. I love them. I've got a, I just signed a 20-year contract. Your hauler can't possibly touch this rate, so I want to stick with, with my hauler." So that was allowed by a previous council. You know, flash forward, the cost of doing business as a waste hauler has gone up dramatically. It costs money to operate vehicles. It costs money to insure your vehicle fleet, to insure your employees, to provide benefits, the cost of fuel, to drive back and forth to Greencastle, you know, every day with a fleet of vehicles. Costs go up for them as well. So in short, you know, we can discuss here whether we want to include a commercial mandate, but are there other services that we would want to see? What, what do members find valuable in this contract? Is there something missing from this contract that you would like to see in the bidding process? Where can we do better for the borough as a whole? Are we overstepping? Are we overreaching by trying to get businesses involved? This is our opportunity to start, and this won't be our last time talking about this before we bid it, but this is an opportunity for us to kind of set a list of our priorities and values here. So I would love to hear any thoughts from anybody here on council.
I would, as a resident, I think having a safe way to recycle or eliminate, get rid of the hazardous waste would be great. I was doing just a cleanup in my basement last week and was shocked at the number of paint cans that I have down there from the last 25 years. Some almost empty, some half-full. And I don't, I know people do put them in black trash bags. I don't, I don't really want to do that. So hazardous waste is one thing I would definitely would be on my list. And the e-waste program, I'd want to continue strongly. That, that's something that Judy and I know Chris was involved in that as well, and that's really a wonderful program. I know I've taken advantage of it. I know people from other municipalities wanted to participate too, and I think some of the other outlying townships now offer the same services. And that's something I think we should definitely continue. A single-stream makes it so much easier for people to participate. I lived in another community where we did separate, and we did it just because we were trying to be responsible, but that's sometimes a problem, especially people that live in apartment buildings and things. You don't have that, that room. As for the businesses, I, I shudder to think that those bottles or cans are just being thrown into the, into the landfill. I'd love to see them somehow pulled out, but I'd feel a little uncomfortable telling businesses that they need to use our, our hauler. I don't know what my colleagues...
May I ask you a follow-up question there?
Yep.
Why would you be comfortable with it with homeowners but not a business owner?
That's a very good question, Mr. Moon. Yeah, I think, because I think, I'll just give my explanation, and you can decide whether you think it's valid, but I think people that live in apartments or homes, you don't, you're not doing a lot of that research yourself and finding out how, you know, how to, to get rid of. You expect when you move into a municipality as a resident, either as a homeowner or renter, that you're going to be able to sign up for those services. I also think that just looking at my, my back alley where the, the truck comes in, imagine like several companies doing that. It makes it a lot more efficient, for one. With businesses, they're looking at, you know, the cost of doing business, and, and part of eliminating their waste is, is part of that as well. So I would be maybe more willing to give them an opportunity to shop it around as they do other services.
Just following up on the, the commercial stuff, I would be hesitant without maybe talking to more business owners, just because from what I've seen, at least in the hospitality industry, you do have a lot of separation of your glass. You'll have, you know, a bunch of totes for those. You'll have a separate one for your trash, and then also a separate one sometimes for all your cardboard. There's also, you know, some of the restaurants, they even like share those costs, or like, "You pay 60, 40 of this," to kind of like manage those things, because there's, with our alleyways, sometimes they're really tough to get, you know, if you already have two or three back there. It's, or I've even seen like custom ones that have been built for, for different business owners because of those restrictions in the alleyways and the electrical lines that go overhead and all that. So when we're talking about the residential and like, okay, if we, if we change that and we're moving one tote to, okay, getting rid of this one, you get a new tote, and the logistics on that are, people get, you know, they don't love that. But that's a lot easier than, okay, all these totes and two dumpsters are going out, and then you have to figure out how to get new ones in, and maybe they were custom-built, or whatnot. And if they, you know, miss a week or something, there's going to be so much trash generated and, and whatnot. I'm not saying I'm against it, but it would definitely need maybe some more discussions with business owners if they'd be open to that or not.
May I add real quick? So we did, when Judy was still with us, we did approach both the bid and GARMA with this. We went to a couple of their meetings, and no one in those meetings said that they were completely opposed to the idea. So that's one reason I thought it'd be worth floating to, to the council to see where you would weigh in on this. The other thing I think to consider is, is kind of an intangible. I don't know how you put a numeric value on it, but this may be like the only area where we can help control truck traffic in the borough. If we have one hauler as opposed to 13. So that's a consideration in my mind. Whether that balance, you know, tips the scale one way or the other, I don't, I don't know how, how you factor that in, but I just want to throw that out there that this, you know, we always hear about the trucks, and this might be the only opportunity we have.
Yeah, I'll add on to that, too. Early in this contract, one of the issues we had, not just with this official hauler, but also with some of the other tangential haulers, is they would really love to get an early start on their day. 5:30, they, they would love to be collecting. And we actually had to start issuing noise ordinance citations. Working with fewer haulers would be a much easier enforcement lift when it comes to, I mean, it went so far as Wes Heiser, former president of council, following the trucks around at 5:00 in the morning and photographing their license plates. Like, he was not pulling any punches on that one. So there, there is an enforcement question there, too. So, folks down here?
Along the lines of what, along the lines of what Ms. Lawson said, I, too, would like to see the hazardous materials collected, especially since the state of Pennsylvania has mandated that we dispose of that properly. But I was wondering if we have in place, or we have some way of cost-sharing that with another municipality or the county. I also think we should explore, continue to explore our e-cycling. I think it's important that, that we continue to do that. I know every year when I'm setting things aside, yes, I am the person with three Kurgs in my garage, probably right now, waiting to dispose of them, but I'm not sure even if our waste haulers that come twice a year take those appliances, because I think it can be, you know, very narrow as far as what we dispose of with our e-cycler, e-cycling program. So I would like to see whether or not we could even expand that, whether it's through our contract or through the waste hauling program, through the e-cycling program. Certainly would like to see yard waste. I mean, I love that DPW comes around and collects our, our sticks and our, our leaves, but, you know, many people in the borough aren't going to be able to load their leaves up into their cars and trucks and take them down and drop them off at DPW should they miss the pickup window. And I'd also like to explore contracts with commercial interests in the borough, because I think there's something to be said about the glass. And thank you for sharing, Peter. Like, that's incredible that it's possible that our commercial interests are doing better at recycling and making sure they are separating and getting things, and keeping things out of the landfill. At the same time, it would be nice to see fewer haulers that could give them the same, the same services.
For the record, I'm a recycling zealot. The, the most we can do individually or collectively for bettering the planet, I'm all for. That said, everything comes at a cost, or somebody's not going to do it for free. I know Adams County Rescue Mission is around the square Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, picking up commercial restaurant and business recycling. They're out, and they're not doing it out of the good of their heart, so I don't know if there's a cost to the businesses or the restaurants for that, but we would need to probably match that, or they're not going to be interested in, in doing it. But literally, they come around with their big box truck three times a week and, and pick up sorted recycling. And obviously, they have a market for it elsewhere, and they make money for it for hopefully a good causes, but that's my two cents on that. Hopefully, we can be better than what's already available by Adams County Rescue Mission.
I agree with everyone. No, I don't need to rehash. All of those were great ideas. I, I definitely think, yes, the hazardous waste and the e-cycling is very important. I also agree about the, the yard waste. You know, we, we are, Gettysburg is such a unique, as we all know, is such a unique and beautiful town, and this, anything that we can do to keep, to provide those services that, to keep our sidewalks clean and our streetscape lovely for our residents and tourists alike, that, that's excellent. I would like, I agree with Mr. Bales. I would like to hear, hear some more from some businesses. I don't grocery shop much. I go downtown and eat everywhere because I love our small business restaurants. So I'll be happy to chat with them and get some feedback to bring back to the table for that. And I love that you are so interested in recycling, because have I got a job for you? You've got big shoes to fill, but I'll bet we could use your help.
Well, so that's a wonderful segue here into our next sort of concept here, which is, when do we need to bid this? When do we need to start the bidding process?
I would think at the latest mid-January.
Yeah. So we have a limited amount of time to kind of get our ducks in a row here. Like, I don't think anybody here has expressed disparate priorities, right? It's just a question of how we get to where we want to be. There, I, I do want to stress that there is an added benefit by, if, if we do roll more residents, more commercial interests into one hauler, it is going to make a better rates for everyone involved. There was a pretty shocking moment at the beginning of the current contract where our previous hauler had just included totes as part of the monthly fee, and everybody was like, "Okay, cool, whatever." But then the new, the new hauler started itemizing totes, and all of a sudden everybody's like, "Well, what's this extra charge?" And it wasn't actually an extra charge. You were always renting your totes from the previous hauler. You just didn't realize it. You thought they were provided for free. And then, you know, it's like, "Well, then you got to pay extra if you also want a recycling tote. And if you wanted a 96-gallon recycling toter, it's going to cost X dollars more." So now you've got the option of buying your own container that you can use for recycling purposes. And for everybody out there, the borough does still have a small supply of the blue rectangular bins if you need one. Those are provided free of charge by the borough. First come, first served. But if, if you go, you know, if I go to Home Depot and I buy a black trash can and I decide, "Well, this is my recycling can," waste management doesn't know that it's recycling because it's not marked, right? So there's been a, a number of sort of snafus around communication, around the rates. You know, we were, sad to see our previous hauler go, but the fact is, the current hauler had the best bid. And, you know, when push comes to shove, we're probably going to have to go with the lowest bid, whether we consider it responsive and responsible or not. Harry will sit here and split hairs with us over what that means. Luckily, we have some documentation. Luckily, we have some documentation. But the more people we can get on the contract, the better rates everyone pays. So our staff does not have a lot of time to dedicate to, you know, polling business owners, residents, et cetera. So, and without Mrs. Butterfield here, I would be interested to see if there are two members here who would like to put together a little working group to spend the next two, three weeks doing just that, talking to businesses, talking to, you know, neighbors and getting feedback on our existing contract. What did they like about their previous one? What did they like about the current one? If they use an alternate vendor, why do they use that vendor? I know a lot of folks just don't even know they were supposed to switch to Waste Management and these, you know, third, fourth, and fifth party providers certainly didn't tell them, oh, by the way, you're not supposed to use us anymore. Like, you know, who's gonna give up their customer base? So I did see Mr. Mooney's hand. Is there anybody else who'd be willing to work on that for a couple of weeks? Think about it?
Yeah, I'll help. I'll help, Bill.
Great. So like, maybe think about, you know, first of the year. It doesn't have to be the most, you know, rigid and regimented survey. It can be anecdotal, but we do want to cast a wide net and talk to people and make sure that we are representing people's best interests. You know, we are all, and this is a situation where we are all ratepayers, right? But not all of us. There are also people in the borough whose landlords do not provide collection service. And so those people just use illegally our street cans for their home waste. That's another issue. We had talked some years ago about trying to draft a theft of services ordinance specifically to deal with this issue. And we even had our hauler going through the trash bags that they're finding in street cans to find addresses of people, which we then give to code enforcement to go knock on their doors and say, hey, you can't do this. And, you know, to varying success depending on where we are. So a lot to consider, but this is a, a situation where, one, we are leaving money on the table. We could potentially be looking at higher rates no matter what we do, but, you know, we could mitigate that if we're rolling as many ratepayers as possible into a contract. And we certainly do need to make sure that the, the list of priorities that we have all elaborated on here are represented in the bidding process. So thank you both for stepping up on that. I really appreciate it. Anxious to hear what you come up with. Thank you.
And just to clarify, Matt, on, on the residential buildings, those residential buildings are indeed supposed to be providing those services to their tenants.
Yep.
By being a residential building within this borough.
Yep.
There is written in an ordinance that they are supposed to be doing that.
I believe so. I'd have to double check that, though.
So then, once we-
I don't, I don't think there's a provision that calls out landlords that need to provide it. I, I do know it's, there's a specific residential mandate. How you define that through a landlord might be a little more gray.
Yeah, there might, it might be a case where a landlord could say, you are responsible for securing your own trash service.
But we could ask our trash service to provide if they don't, if, if they don't, we probably provide them the addresses, but if they don't have the addresses.
So no, we don't provide that.
They, they have the addresses.
That was another issue with the transition, too, is that the previous hauler provided a list of ratepayers to-
Right.
-the new hauler, but no, neither of them seemed to be aware that that excluded maybe twenty to thirty percent of residences.
But we could get that list of, these are our clients in the borough.
Mm-hmm.
And we can compare that with our list of, these are the residential, and we know that because they have to pass code enforcement to be an apartment in the borough.
Sure.
And so then we can compare that and say, ha ha, there is someone-
But y'all's project just keeps getting more elaborate here. I like this. I like your can-do attitude.
Could I say something about hazardous waste? Because it's, it's something Ms. Butterfield was really interested in, and, and Ms. English on staff did some research on it. And, and you're correct that there is no one in Adams County providing this service. So it might be worth exploring an opportunity, a fee for service for non-borough residents on that. And Borough can, the Borough can step up and fill a void that needs to be filled.
There, there was a time very recently where this was not as much of a morass for municipalities to navigate. The county was instrumental in both the bidding process as well as in keeping municipalities abreast of opportunities, of regulation, of, of changes in the rules. Unfortunately, the person who was sort of the maven of this retired, I mean, not unfortunately for her, I'm glad for her, but the county was not able to backfill that void. And the bidding process has become a little bit more cumbersome for municipalities here, but even still, I don't think this is in navigable for us here. So thank you for both for offering to step up and help with this. Typically, the person on staff you would be interacting with over this is Deborah. She may or may not be directly available for the time being, but in, for now, you certainly can start, you know, these discussions in the public. Anything else on that?
No. I, I have my list of things.
I would just say also, Matt, I doubt that any of these waste haulers would do this, but for anybody, any, you know, restaurant or business that does use fryers, you actually, you do have to get rid of your shortening waste differently and pay a different company to come in and take that out. Maybe it's something that we could include in this, too.
Cooking oil collection, both for restaurants and for home use, would be really a great thing to include.
But I, I don't know if any of them do that, because it's, they are like different trucks completely.
Yes. I know locally, I believe, is it Atline does collection?
Or like Planet Fry?
Yes, yeah, I think they're part of Atline.
Yeah.
Like a subsidiary company. Yeah, no, they've realized that it's, it's a relatively simple industrial process to turn that cooking waste into biodiesel. But, you know, we don't really have a good way for residences to dispose of cooking oils as well. So that would be an interesting thing to pursue in the bid as well.
I did miss one item, bulk item pickup.
Oh, my God, yes.
It's kind of a crapshoot. No one quite knows how that works. So we would, I would like to see that simplified and insured.
Yeah, so I do know a little bit about how that works with Waste Management. They, they have a list of items they will take. You have to have contacted them ahead of time so they know that they're picking it up. Not that that changes how many people are coming or what vehicle they're gonna use. It's, it's all the same, but they still require the advance notice. It's generally one bulk item per collection and you have to have prior approval and notification. There is a list on their website or through the app on their phone, on your phone. So, all right. If you have more ideas, please bring them up. You know, I, I think that was a great addition just there, Mr. Bales. Thank you both for taking that on. And we will move on to a review of our two-year accomplishments and we're, what we would desire our legislative priorities to be in 2026. We do try to come up with two or three sort of ambitious projects, things that are pressing in terms of issues that have come to light, problems with the existing ordinance. Sometimes some of these ordinances go back forty, fifty years and haven't been touched since. But that doesn't, you know, so, you know, Charles is gonna suggest a list here, but that doesn't mean that those are necessarily your priorities, right? There might be things that you have been thinking about that you think we could take a stab at, and they are certainly things we can workshop in the coming years. So please don't be shy about suggesting ideas here. But for the time being, I'll let Charles talk about the accomplishments.
Yeah, so this list will disappear in January because this council's term in office is coming to a close and a new council, even though most of you will sit on that new council. Legislatively, a new council is gonna be seated come first Monday?
First Monday, yeah.
First Monday in January. So former council president Wes Heiser famously said, this is a council that gets stuff done. And, and he's not wrong. I mean, look, everything in red with a, a cross through it, you've completed in two years. That's pretty impressive in my mind. But there are some big things still hanging out there. And so things in blue have yet to be either started or finalized. We are well into PBS 2016-12, which means that policy briefing summary started in 2016 with the sidewalk ordinance. So I would think we should make that one of your top priorities next year.
Yep.
Is let's push that across the finish line. And there's various components to that. And some, some things are a little more controversial than others, but I think certainly if we make that a priority, we should, by, by the end of next year, we should be able to, to finish that. And of course, SALDO is kind of the, the tangent to the comprehensive rezoning, which is up for a vote on December eighth. I think those should probably be your top two priorities for next year, but there are a list of other things and there are things that are not on this list. So with that, I'd be curious to know how you would like to direct your staff's attention in the next twelve months.
Okay. So the sidewalk ordinance, you know, we do still have a lot of work to do on that. We have started chipping away at some of the low-hanging fruit on that, but we do have some things we really need to be thoughtful about. First and foremost, at this moment, code enforcement on sidewalk safety is sort of on hold, waiting for us to figure out how we want to approach this. We have, I think, laid some really important groundwork here in that we had decided that council, that had decided that the borough would be taking responsibility for damage caused by our street tree program. And further, there are sidewalks that have been damaged by trees that predate the street tree program. So is it the borough's tree? Is it the property owner's tree? That's sort of, there's an ambiguity there that is really almost impossible to navigate. So, you know, there is a expedience in just assuming that if it's in the planting strip, it's, it's our responsibility to deal with damage from a sidewalk. Now, if you have a, a tree on your property that's not necessarily in the right-of-way, not in the planting strip, but it has still caused sidewalk heaving, you know, that's gonna have to be a discussion with that particular property owner. We don't have a lot of that, if any, but most, most of our heaving comes from trees def, in the planting strips and in tree wells. Our friends at the Shade Tree Commission did us a massive favor this year in doing a comprehensive survey of the street trees. And we have this document, Mr. Mooney, we'll try to get you a copy of that. It's, it's really something to see. Where they went through and they listed every single street tree, its age, its size, its, where they could figure out the age, its species, and then assessed half inch, one inch, and two inch or more disruptions to the sidewalk. And so we're actually able to go through this document, which saved our staff. I mean, I can't even imagine how many hours the, the two of them spent doing this. It is comprehensive and it allows us to start prioritizing the worst damage and dealing with that so we can make some of these sidewalks more passable and walkable. There are other places where there is, there is damaged sidewalk that is absolutely the property owner's responsibility under the ordinance. So we could begin a code enforcement agenda if we finish this massive undertaking here. And then the next big, open question on that is, do we just tell people, hey, you know, here's the ordinance, it's always, it's been that way for thirty years, fix it already. We don't care how much it costs. Like, no, none of us wants to be those people. So instead, the staff has floated the idea of using our existing revolving loan fund, which previously we had used for forgivable pandemic-era small business loans to keep our small businesses going in a tough time. That has been repaid. We have this money sitting there waiting to be used. You know, a slab of sidewalk can be somewhere between five thousand dollars, seven thousand dollars, depending on the dimensions, three to seven. That's a, that's a big bill if you're not expecting it. You know, if, if code enforcement shows up at your door and says, you've got thirty days, or we're gonna start fining you a thousand dollars a day, you're gonna, you're gonna lose your mind, right? Like, that's, I don't, I don't have that kind of money just waiting to go into the Can I even line up a contractor within thirty days, right? I mean, there's all sorts of considerations and concerns. So we could, you know, we have the ability to, if we want to, to create a zero-interest loan program for sidewalk repair for residents. So we do have some, some work to do on that still. And since we have spent a fair amount of time on it, I, I would advise we keep it on the agenda for next year. Does anybody have an objection to that? The SALDO, so this is one that has been on the list of tabled items for as long as I've been observing council, probably ten years or more. This is the section of the ordinance that dictates the rules for subdivision and land development, right? So this is a big deal. If you need to split up a parcel, if you want to land development, these rules need to be brought up to date, too. When we mentioned that we might be interested in this, in this year, I saw Chad Claybaugh's eyes light up like an anime character. He's like, oh, my God, thank you. They're like, finally, right? So this is an important thing, too. It, it affects planning and zoning. It affects engineering. It affects the streetscape. It affects so many aspects of, of how people can utilize their private property. There's other things on this list that we will be crossing off in the next year, the welcome center and the management of that. We still have to figure that out. So we had talked previously, over the course of many months this year, the, the rules dictating how Harb functions have been a source of debate and contention, not necessarily amongst this body, but in the community. That is another place we could choose to spend a serious amount of energy is looking at the Harb ordinance. No, no, don't all cheer for that one at once. Transient retail business ordinance, I don't know that we need to touch that. We've tried several times in six years and there's never a consensus for making any substantive changes. We've got plans to continue working on the inner loop. We are in the process of working on these Stevens Run channel wall ownership issues, rights of way and repairs. By the way, if none of you have had a chance, you should go look at the new wall on Bream Alley. It's super cool. We're, we have begun the process of budgeting, the design phase for the new facilities building. And soon, we will own a Stevens Run mower as well, so, robot.
Actually, we already do. I forgot to check it off.
I was gonna say, that should be, that's what I love to do.
Oh, I wanna go, I wanna go ride it like a cat.
I love to write things on my to-do list that I already did and cross it out, because it makes you feel more productive. Oh, yeah, I already did that. Let me write it out and cross it out.
I will scratch it out on my screen here.
They're already using it.
So we actually have crossed off a considerable amount of stuff in two years. We do have a couple of big lists in front of us, right? Sidewalks, SALDO, those definitely, I think, should be top priorities. I hate to say it, but I think maybe we have a responsibility to take a hard look at Harb, but that doesn't mean- But that doesn't mean this is the only priority. So are there things that you folks would like to see worked on? And it can be, you know, pie in the sky, right? A couple of years ago, somebody had suggested the pilot on open container in the business district. People have suggested open container, or not open container, pilot programs for a variety of things. Maybe there's a thing you've always wanted to see happen in the borough, and it's just never come up. This is a great time to kind of kick the tires.
Going back to sidewalk things, or as I call it, the park whore of Gettysburg. If there were a, like, like you talked about earlier about having one vendor, like for municipal waste, if we had one approved vendor for sidewalk repairs, and everybody can piggyback onto that, would be a better price for everybody? Just my two cents on that. I know we got a lot of discussions about that in the future, so.
Yep. Yeah, we've talked about that approach. It's a, there can be some wisdom there if we can find companies willing to bid for those contracts, sure.
I've said this before, but I would still like to see there in this or maybe in our capital projects, the, a plan for a new police department building in the future. If we're working on the Works Department building, can those be joined at the hip? Or if there's others who have interest in that as well?
I, I, going to the sidewalk repair, I think, I really, I was thinking the zero loan interest and knowing that we had that money back. I think that's a good use of that money that we used during COVID to help small businesses. I think it's a real hardship for residents. And also, there's some, there's a lot of discrepancy out there in terms of what, and I'm thinking one property in particular down on Carlisle Street that's that's commercial, but it's right near where the the bridge is, you know? Is that the person who owns that building, or is that the borough over Stevens Run? So I would definitely support the zero-interest loan to help people. The other thing that, for me, would be pie in the sky, and this gets a little political, but but I'm going to go for it because I have one meeting left, so. So I can do it. I, many of you have known that for a long time I've been looking at the pill tax. And I think, I think actually, frankly, the borough gets some, really, the short stick here on on this. There's a lot of revenue that comes into this borough from the pill tax money. It's collected by the county. A few years ago, with Susan Ogles' blessing, I chaired a task force on looking at the pill tax, and we used some Gettysburg College students, as well as those of us on council that served on that. I know John Lawver and I were part of that. And every municipality that collects pill tax money in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania was surprised, and I had people laughing when they realized what the county takes from from the pill tax. The county, for those of you that may not know, the Commonwealth did this, was it part of the stadium fund years ago or separate from that? That this, in terms of allowing us to collect pill tax money, it was to help with tourism, I know.
Yeah, there was, there was state legislation that was specific, specifically passed for Adams County, which is the only county that has it.
Right. So what what happens, and for our new council members, it would be good to know. So they collect, you know, revenue from municipalities that have beds. So you have hotels or bed and breakfast or inns, and you also have to have law enforcement.
Full-time.
So there are about six municipalities in Adams County that qualify for that. And so when that tax or fee is put on hotel rooms, that money then is collected by the county. Millions of dollars are collected that come in. And the county takes a 4% a 4% fee right off the top, which most counties throughout the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania do. But then the rest of the money, 75% of those funds goes to Destination Gettysburg. And I have to say, with their new administration, they've been good partners, they've been good partners with the borough, with Welcome Center, working closely with our borough manager and our Main Street Gettysburg director or president. And so they receive 75%. I would question whether or not that number should be as high, because, let's face it, we're, they're promoting Gettysburg. They're not promoting, you know, New Oxford, East Berlin, Carroll Valley, and, you know, my apologies to those municipalities, because that's, you know, they just don't have the name recognition that a Gettysburg does. So, but but that's the way the bill was cut in Harrisburg, that Destination Gettysburg, the tourism bureau, as some of us remember, has received 75%. So then there's a remaining 25% that comes in. And where does that money go? Well, the county takes 12 and 1/2% of that. And then the remaining 12 and 1/2% is distributed to those six municipalities that have beds and have law enforcement. So Gettysburg Borough receives about $164,000 in pill tax money out of millions of dollars collected. And that is just, in my estimation, that is way off. It's it's wrong. It occurred during a back kitchen deal, backdoor deal, about 15, almost 20 years ago, with a former borough council member and the former head of Destination Gettysburg and a state legislator. And I have had conversations with Mary Jo Daly's office because, and she's leaving, actually, she's, her term is up, but she runs the the travel committee. And we actually have a member. Dan Mao served on the travel committee for years, though he didn't remember that when I had a conversation with him about it. So interesting. But I really think that that pie needs to be someone on council, or you could tap a citizen who has an interest in this to continue to pursue it. But I think we need to have meetings with our folks in Harrisburg. And and I would say that I think, to varying degrees, we have had good conversations with with our legislators in Harrisburg and certainly down in DC. And that's something that I think should be ramped up big time for us to, there's not a lot of money right now, but when there is, we want to be a player in all of that. And for the pill tax, when we talk about the parades, and we were not the most popular people here a couple of years ago, when we started instituting fees, and our former police chief rightly recognized that there were safety issues and brought in, you know, new safety measures, that costs money. You know, Robbie and his staff spend days in advance of parades, getting things in place. People come into Gettysburg, they come here for the restaurants, the shops, the museums. They come here because the battle occurred right on Baltimore Street, you know, crossfire right on Baltimore Street. So Gettysburg draws a lot of interest and, I think, deserves a bigger share of that pie. And so I'll get off my soapbox here, but I I think that's really important, and I don't want us to forget it, and I want the new council members to know that. I also think that it's a bit of a crime that the county is taking 12 and 1/2% of that remaining 25%. And and I think that needs to be looked at. And that was done in a closed-door deal years ago, before any of us were part of council.
But not like a literal crime, right, Patty?
I don't know. That is still to be remaining, anyway. So, thank you.
Yep, that's, that is a subject we could broach. Just, you know, so you understand a little bit of the math. It's a 5% tax, so for every $100 spent on lodgings, $5 is collected on top of that. And Gettysburg's cut is about 31 cents. It is pretty meager.
Yeah, $164,000. $164,000 15 years ago sounded like a big, a big amount, because they were, Gettysburg before that time was only receiving $40,000. So that seemed like a, oh, yes, let's jump at that, 40,000 to 164,000. But you look at the numbers now, and we're getting screwed, really. There's no other way to put it.
I agree with Ms. Lawson, and I'm glad that you said everything that you said. I think it needed to be said for a long time. And I'm guessing that that, any type of change is going to take new legislation to do that. So I would encourage that the council consider that, putting that on our list of legislative priorities. At the very least, a task force, as Ms. Lawson already had had done years ago, do that again, get some data, get some people interested in talking to our our elected officials and bring people to the table. Again, I agree that there's been some great work partnering as of late with new new administration at Destination Gettysburg, but this is, many of them weren't there when all of this happened. So it'd be good to get everybody on the same page of where we can improve. And I agree with you that everyone is coming to Gettysburg. Nothing against the other municipalities in Adams County, but we need the bigger bite out of that apple for pill tax.
Yep.
The other thing, too, is that it's hard to get a reading on where that 12 and 1/2% that the county takes goes. We're not really quite sure. We do know that about a few years ago, when the new, the Adams County Historical Society moved and created that beautiful, wonderful museum, Beyond the Battle, it's excellent, I've taken lots of visitors there, that we know that some of that money went to help them. That, of course, museum is not in in the borough. And so I'm not sure if we received any help from the county for the Welcome Center, did we? Mr. Borough Manager?
For the Welcome Center, no.
No, okay. Rest of my case.
Somehow, I don't think you have. All right. All right. I think that's a good starting point. Now, this list does not have to be finalized tonight. We can add through to this throughout the year. You know, this is not something we carve in stone here.
And I just, when I agree with you, Mr. Murner, I think Harb should be, we should take a look at that as well.
All right, does anybody have an opposition to putting Harb on our priority list for next year?
It should be.
Okay.
No opposition, just a quick question. We have the historic district replacement materials revisions. Wouldn't that be included as part?
Yeah, you could definitely rope that all in.
It would make sense to just fold that in if that's the case.
Yeah, so that, those are, those actually would be two different projects. Like, one would be a look at the ordinance, and then the other would be a rewriting of the design guide. I'm not 100% certain we would be involved in the rewriting of the design guide. I think that would be a, like, a project that we task staff with and then probably have to budget some funds towards. It is, it's a pretty big undertaking as well.
And then one last thing, and I'll shut up.
Please.
Well, maybe I won't shut up, but one last thing, or one other thing. Tag teaming off of Mr. Bale's comment about something more substantial or for the police department to be housed in. I would, I would like to talk with Sergeant Evans and Mr. Bale's and Manager Gable about perusing some different ideas, just to see, just to have a discussion, if we could do that at some point about that.
Some of us might have an idea kicking around.
Great.
All right. Anything else anybody would like to add before we move on? All right, thank you all. That concludes our new and old business for the evening. We'll move on to our second public comment section of the evening. This section is not restricted to items on the agenda. You can speak on any topic, though we do ask you restrain yourself to five minutes. Please use the podium and the microphone. Please list your name and address of residence. Is there any public comment?
Thanks, guys. Is, is that on? Okay. First, I wasn't going to talk about this, but I agree with Ms. Lawson about the pill tax, since I'm a collector of the pill tax and a payer of the pill tax. I probably pay $30,000 to $40,000 a year, and a bigger percentage of that should probably go to Gettysburg, who's using most of the Destination Gettysburg. It's a marketing company, but what I want to talk about, other than that, may have something to do with Destination Gettysburg. And that's about the budget, which you're going to be voting on in your next business meeting, and the deficit. I kind of followed along with the budget meetings, but didn't see all of them. I believe you started like a $400,000 deficit, got down to $300,000. Did it finish at $200,000 deficit or so, which would be a tax increase? But what I really wanted to, it's not really a statement, or it's more of a question, is you're giving $100,000 to next year's American 250, the Lincoln event, I think you call it appropriation. Is that part of the deficit, or is that something totally separate? Could that money be used to lower the deficit, or does it have to be assigned to something? Because $100,000 to taxpayers who won't benefit from the event next year, I think, is a little unfair, if that's what it's for. So I really don't know the answer to that. I really didn't follow along how that money is being used properly. If anybody can comment back to me. I would just like to say, if the $100,000 could be used for something else, Destination Gettysburg and private donors should pay for that event next year, not the taxpayer, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Give me a call, and we can talk about how that that budget ended up.
Okay. And lastly, if there was anything, if I could add to that list, would be, I don't, I think I talked to Chad about this a week or two ago. I don't travel a lot, but everywhere I travel to these days has parking kiosks, not old-fashioned meters like we have, and they're all $3 an hour. So we are not charging enough for parking, and it'd probably be a good idea to start investing in kiosks, even if it's just the heavily trafficked areas around Lincoln Square, Steinway Avenue. Everywhere I go, that's what I'm using. Stick your credit card in there, and it's nothing less than $3 an hour. So, all right? Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Hello, my name's John Buckcaser. I own four businesses in Gettysburg, and I do also collect and just pay pill tax. I'm really proud that Ms. Lawson spoke up about how that is dispersed, even with the $100,000 budget they want to use towards the 250 Gettysburg promotion for America next year. I know one of the reasons is to, the more people you get in town, the more you get money goes in the parking meters. That's more money, because that's one of Gettysburg's number one moneymakers is the parking meters. The more people you get in the town, the more business comes to town, the more everybody benefits. I can see that. With Ms. Lawson's comment, with that being said, and the pill tax and stuff, I wish some of that $100,000 budget would be paid by Destination Gettysburg. A lot of that money goes to there, and it's their job to promote getting people to town, to Adams County. So it would be nice if that could be part of that. And Mr. Carr, Mr. Murner, I did like your comments tonight with everything you said and the, along with the recycling. And you guys just are really energetic and stuff like that, and I really appreciate what you're all doing. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Any other comments? All right. Thank you, everybody. Nice, short meeting. We will adjourn to executive session. Thank you.